Yes.
Yes.
Eric, are they ready? I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the police please present the colors?
Everybody stand.
Yep. Oh, good.
Under guard. Post, colors. Word, marks.
City clerk, could we call the roll?
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Jean Baptiste. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes. Alderman Tindham. Alderman Grover. Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, December 13th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. I have one public announcement from the Northwest Municipal Conference. I am told that CMAP has a wonderful data-rich warehouse and to get into this treasure trove, you go www.metropulsechicago.org and you can find out all sorts of information about Evanston or any other city you wish. It's designed to make it easy to apply for grants and it's also designed for anyone in the public who wants these facts to have them. City manager, do you have announcements and presentations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Several items this evening. First, since your last meeting, we've had three new key staff members join us and I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce them to you. First is Steve Griffin. Steve, if you could stand. Steve is our new Director of Community and Economic Development. He comes to us from Prince William County, Virginia, where he was the Director of Planning and prior to that held planning positions in Spotsylvania County, Virginia, as well as Gulf Shores, Mississippi. Steve's been with us now about what? I'm sorry?
Alabama.
Alabama, Mississippi. It's all the same. So we're very happy to have Steve here as our new Director of Community and Economic Development. Steve, welcome.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
Yay.
Next, I'd like to introduce our new Manager for Economic Development, Nancy Ratchovich. Nancy comes to us from Boston where she worked for Mass Development, which is the state of Massachusetts Economic Development Arm and did a variety of different things with Mass Development. Prior to that, she was the Chief Planner of Newton, Massachusetts, has done a variety of different planning positions, both in the state of Massachusetts and the state of Illinois. She's from Palos Heights, Illinois and has degrees from the University of Illinois-Champaign-Urbana and the University of Illinois-Chicago. So Nancy, we're very pleased to have you join us as well. Next is our new Sustainable Programs Coordinator, Catherine Hurley. Catherine, welcome. Catherine joins us from MWH America, which is the American Division of a large international water wastewater environmental services conglomerate. Catherine's done a variety of different environmental sustainability projects for governments as diverse as the DuPage Water Commission of various cities, the Chicago City of Elgin, working on a variety of issues. Catherine has a degree in engineering. She's a professional engineer from the University of Dayton. She lives in Willmette and is a graduate of that other high school, which we don't talk about too much, Nutria High School. So Catherine, welcome. We're very happy to have you. Next, I'd like to call up our Chief of Police, Rich Eddington. Rich is here to make a presentation regarding a national award that the Evanston Police Department has recently won.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, members of the council and your honor. This is a great evening for the Evanston Police Department. We're going to highlight the efforts of three of our key members of our department, the members of the Foot Patrol Team and the members of the PST Team, Officer Tanya Noble, Officer Jones and Officer Rust. Great guys who made a huge impact on a neighborhood and that impact on a neighborhood began by listening at a fifth ward meeting. We're going to show a short videotape and then Chief Scott Hayer from the Itasca Police Department will walk us through that award process and then he'll present the award to the mayor. If you'd start the video, please.
There was a lot of gang activity, crime, and it was really kind of sad.
People from other neighborhoods didn't alert you, they're coming in the town again on this block. And I would never come out my foot, go up the block. And it was really tough to be around here.
I'm George Holmes. I'm all over the fifth ward. I was first elected in 2005 and Jackson Avenue was my worst block. Since that time, we've worked very, very hard with the neighbors, with the police department, with all the city departments to make change.
I lived in 1939 Jackson for 35 years. Through all my years in Evanston, right here on this block, I've seen it come from gang-ridden and in the taxi tourney to a nice quiet neighborhood like any other neighborhood.
The improvement over the last three years has been absolutely fantastic, going from thousands on police calls down to less than 100. So we're very excited about that. Part of our problem was that the violence battle here, a lot of crime activity, a lot of blightery, drug sales, horrible, terrible home landlords that just didn't care about the neighborhood. So therefore, the residents weren't caring about the neighborhood.
And it was really tough to be around here. We used to have a lot of fun around here, but we always used to be in our backyard to have to take it to Fort Sounoro Fleetwood, Jordan, because you couldn't come outside because of the gangs and the drug trafficking and things like that.
I think we changed that SNAP program, which is a safer area neighborhood project. And through that, we were able to convince the city of Evanston, our police chief, that we needed a foot patrol. We needed officers who knew the community, who were comfortable with talking to the residents, who would come out and let the people know who they were and what the expectations for the block was.
For more than 30 years, the 1900 block of Jackson and Evanston, Illinois was plagued by serious chronic crime. In 2008, SNAP was developed. Crime prevention through environmental design and community policing measures were merged, supported by a community development block grant. The SNAP philosophy was designed to rebuild trust and collaboration between citizens, police and resource providers by reaching out, connecting and working together to improve conditions, reduce fear and develop safe and secure surroundings.
And next thing you know, it was like night and day. Now it's really nice, it's really beautiful. And you can walk up and down the kids, you can walk the dogs, you can let your kids ride their bikes up and down the street. I couldn't do that maybe 10 years ago, or maybe five years ago. You know, it happened really fast. It was a revolution. It happens fast. It really did happen fast. It was really nice. It happened really good. If they could do that, you could do it anymore.
As I said before, I am just really excited about the changes that we've made, about the improvement of the block and that now people are wanting to come on the block.
Now that it's coming back up with the help of the Evanston Police Department and the elected officials, I'm back and I love it. I'm back over here where I grew up and it's good. I purchased a condominium over here.
Before I decided to move into this neighborhood, everyone was talking really bad about it. Do not move in. You have a daughter. I don't want her to be around there. It's really bad. After I decided to make those steps on moving in, it's really very surprising. It's super quiet, very nice neighbors. Everyone is very friendly and very helpful.
I bought a wood looking house on this block with the hope to transform it to what it used to be. When I first started working on the project, when we walked down the street, a lot of people tell me I'm crazy. This block turns out to be a very nice spot to be working in. I have no problem whatsoever. Everybody's friendly. I see a lot of nice young family moving into the block and I'm looking forward to finishing this project up and have some nice family move into the house that we just rehabbed. I think this is a hidden block here as a gem to be discovered. I think people who used to have bad conception about how this little Jackson Street will change.
I'm really happy that I decided to move into Jackson Avenue because it's a really nice, friendly, family-oriented neighborhood.
And I hope they keep up this work. It's a quiet neighborhood. It's probably one of the best neighborhoods in town. It's the only neighborhood I know. I don't plan on leaving anytime.
We've moved in new people with new attitude. We're starting a new block club and I know that by the end of my next term, Jackson's going to be our best block.
Before I introduce Chief Hayer, I have to recognize Gary Brooks is the cinematographer on that. If you understand the lighting challenges that he worked through to make this piece of tape, it was phenomenal, a great devotion of time and also a member of the Brummel Park Neighbors Block Club that we hold up all the time as "The Block Club, the Model." With that, Chief, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager and members of the council. On behalf of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, it gives me great pleasure to appear before you this evening and present to you the 2010 IACP Cisco Community Policing Award to the Evanston Police Department. To give you just a little bit of background about the rigorous requirements for receiving the award, I've been a member of the Community Policing Committee for over five years and I've been a judge of the Community Policing Awards for all five years. Each year, we receive anywhere between 175 and 200 submissions for the Community Policing Award. The awards undergo a rigorous academic review and peer review and after those reviews, we select what we feel are the best community policing programs in the world. Some years, we don't present awards to all the categories because they're not worthy of receiving award and certainly what you saw here tonight was an award-winning submission by the Evanston Police Department and proof that what you can accomplish when police departments and cities and community groups and neighborhoods work together to control, reduce and eradicate crime and improve the quality of life in neighborhoods. So without further ado, it gives me extreme pleasure to present to you, Ms. Mayor, Mrs. Mayor, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, the 2010 IACP Community Policing Award to the Evanston Police Department. Thank you very much.
Where's Alderman Holmes?
Yes.
He won this too. Here we go.
Thank you so much. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Next, Madam Mayor, I would like to ask Pat Sheehan, our Superintendent of Streets and Sanitation, to come up and talk about our holiday trash collection scheduling.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager and members of the State Council. Pat Sheehan, Superintendent of Streets and Sanitation. Just wanted to provide a brief announcement regarding our holiday collections this year. With Christmas and New Year's falling on a Saturday, our city observes those holidays on the Friday before. As a result, our residential recycling collections, or our condominium recycling collections, pardon me, will be taking place earlier in the week. For areas north of Church Street, we will be collecting on the Wednesday prior, both to the Christmas holiday and New Year's. And for areas south of Church Street, we will be collecting on the Thursday before. Following the holiday, the New Year holiday, we will be returning to our regular Friday collections for residential condominium recycling. There will be no impact to our residential garbage and recycling collections as a result of the holiday observances and that includes our condominium garbage collections as well as our commercial and residential group collections.
Thank you.
In keeping with the holidays, I'll also ask our Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, Doug Gainer, to come up and cover two issues. One is our Christmas tree collections and the process for disposal of Christmas trees. I'm also asking Doug to kind of give an overview of the variety of different community holiday collections and support programs we're providing for families around Evanston. And then after that, Doug will also talk about the Levy Senior Center earning a national award as well. So Doug, if you could cover those three things.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, members of the City Council, the City of Evanston crews will be picking up the trees, the Christmas trees, beginning December 27th and continue for five consecutive weeks. All trees should be placed on the parkways and not in the alleys as trees that are in the alleys will not be picked up. Trees will be picked up on the same day of the week as your normal refuse and recycling during the weeks of December 27th, January 3rd, 10th, 17th and the 24th. And this gives residents flexibility to put the trees or take them down and put them out when it's convenient. We do ask you, please, remove all lights and decorations and do not place them in any type of plastic bag as this material damages the equipment we use to convert the trees into mulch. The second announcement is, as the City Manager outlined, following efforts for the City of Evanston's Holiday Department giveaway. First of all, the Fire Department Holiday Assistance Program. Members of Local 742 annually donate 20 Thanksgiving dinners with all the trimmings to Family Focus. Local 742 and others within the department donate Christmas presents to the Salvation Army's After School Youth Program, highlighted with a visit by Santa Claus at a party at Station Two, which was held this past Saturday. Finally, Local 742 and other members of that department donate gifts to Family Focus, highlighted with the delivery of those gifts by an engine company to a party, which will take place on the 14th at 4:15. The Evanston Police Department Holiday Food Basket Program, the Evanston Police Department will be distributing holiday food baskets to over 100 worthy Evanston families on Friday, December 17th. Police Department employees have supported this annual charity event through their personal donations for over 26 years. Referrals for recipients come from Department Senior Services Program, Social Service Bureau, four senior buildings. Supporting the Evanston Police Department's annual charity this year includes Sam's Club, ATK Foods, Whole Foods, Highland Baking Company, Dominic's Food and Fiera Pan Candy Company. Parks and Recreation Department and Community Services, this is a collective project between the Parks Recreation Community Services Department and several other community groups who felt the need to reduce the number of the same persons going to different sites to receive Christmas donations. We've met with Family Focus twice with representatives from the Evanston Masons, Family Focus, Evanston Southeast Parent Association and the Evanston North Shore Community Choir, Inc. There's also been meetings with Lois Spells from the Evanston Police Department and Betsy Jenkins from Fleetwood, Jordan, to try to make the effort a success. So the plans we are following are, collection sites are the Rain H. Morton Civic Center from 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and Saturday from 7:30 to 3:30. All fire stations, Monday through Sunday, before 7:00 a.m. and after 4:00 p.m. And starting on 12/13, the Evanston Public Library. Requests for donations come in until December 20th and collectively, we take names of persons needing assistance and we've been advertising this now for several weeks. And those are primarily what we're doing in the way of holiday donations and giveaway. The Parks Recreation Community Services Department, along with those other members that I just mentioned, will be providing 250 baskets with turkeys and trimmings for the holidays. And finally, though you'll be hearing about this, in February, we have tentatively scheduled a presentation on the senior services that are being provided. I thought it'd be important to let you know that the Levy Senior Center has achieved National Senior Center accreditation and completing the accreditation process demonstrates to center members and the Evanston community that the Levy Center met the highest national standards. We'll go into that detail later on in February. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gainer.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste.
Can, I don't know whether you will, somebody will announce when the lighting of the canar for the beginning of the Kwanzaa season will be held, the 26th. Yeah, I thought there was that Fleetwood, Jordan usually takes the lead on that?
Yeah, we have an event at Fleetwood and there's also another event at Fountain Square on the 26th.
Okay. So it would be good if anyone knows exactly what time that would take place, that it would be announced so those who are listening would know. So if anybody can talk to Betsy Jenkins, we'll announce it during Call of the Wars then.
Sure.
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock? Okay, 3 o'clock on the 26th, which is the first day of Kwanzaa.
And lastly, Madam Mayor, I'd like to call Deputy Police Chief Demetrius Cook to the podium for the purposes of a presentation.
Hello, Chief Cook. I'm going to read all of this and then I'm going to tell you even a little more. Whether it was negotiating the often tough streets of Chicago's Altdad Gardens, public housing projects, or befriending a child in some of Evanston's neighborhoods, Deputy Chief Demetrius Cook had the ability to reach across all sectors of society. As a youth, Deputy Chief Cook was selected by the prestigious Upward Bound Program, resulting in his attending and graduating from Southern Illinois University. In January of 1983, Deputy Chief Cook was then hired by Northwestern University's Public Safety Department and in October of 1984, Deputy Chief Cook began his career as an Evanston police officer. As a patrolman, Deputy Chief Cook quickly distinguished himself and was transferred to the Crime Prevention Bureau, where he was one of Evanston's first foot patrol officers and was acknowledged as Crime Prevention Officer of the Year. Circulating throughout Evanston's neighborhoods, Deputy Chief Cook established a level of trust, carefully cultivating citizen relationships. Between 1988 and 1995, Deputy Chief Cook worked the streets of Evanston in the Gang Crimes Bureau and the Neighborhood Enforcement Team. In 1996, Deputy Chief Cook was promoted to the rank of Sergeant, serving in patrol operations, and in 1998, once again was promoted in the rank of Lieutenant, a rank now classified as Commander, where he served in the Investigative Services Division. In 2004, then Commander Cook was promoted to his current rank of Deputy Chief, where he served in the Support Services Division and the Investigative Services Division. Deputy Chief Cook continually advanced his education, attaining a Master of Science degree from Lewis University, attending Harvard Senior Management Institute, Northwestern Senior Management Leadership Program and School of Police Staff and Command. Deputy Chief Cook was also very active as a board member for the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Officers. During his career as an Evanston police officer, Deputy Chief Cook was the recipient of over 70 Citizen Letters of Appreciation, 11 Certificates of Recognition, seven honorable mentions and five Department Commendations and was also recognized as Officer of the Year by the veterans of foreign wars. On December 17th, 2010, Deputy Chief Demetrius Cook will conclude his distinguished 26-year career as an Evanston police officer, becoming the Village of Glenwood's Chief of Police. During this time, Deputy Chief Cook established a reputation as a trusted liaison between the Evanston Police Department and the Evanston community. As a police officer, Deputy Chief Cook was a cop's cop, always leading by example and demonstrating the Evanston way of policing. His service and dedication will be missed. And I personally would like you to know that whenever I saw you and sometimes in difficult situations, you always made me feel calmer about the whole thing. So I appreciate that. I think that the respect for your policing goes well beyond the police department and the citizens you've served to the entire community and certainly through the entire City Council. We are very grateful to you and here you go.
Thank you very much.
I'm very humbled and appreciative of this award, but before I leave, I'd like to thank the public, the people who pay my salary, people who I've met over the years, because I believe the public is at the top of the food chain when it comes to city government. I'd also like to thank Mr. Bob Kowicz and Chief Eddington for helping me through this process, this transitional process from leaving this organization and going through contracts and getting to know the lay of the land in terms of how you progress from one department to the next in the rank of police chief. I'm also very appreciative of the automatic officials. I've always had a great relationship with them, but I would like to personally thank Alderman Holmes, Alderman Baptiste and Alderman Rainey because these Aldermen have been with me since I came to Evanston and have always received some good and wholesome instruction from each of them. But the most important aspect of this job to me is the public and I want the City of Evanston, all communities, to know that I'm going to miss you all and good luck and thank you very much.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor and Chief Cook. On behalf of the people of my ward and I'm sure the City of Evanston, I want to tell you how much you meant to my ward and how whenever you were called, you were always right there. right there. And I don't want to diminish all the work that you've done in the community by mentioning some of your administrative duties, but one of the greatest things that you've ever accomplished was the completion of the, what? Of the shooting range? Oh, wait, you didn't finish that? Well, I was told by City Manager Bob Kowicz that you would have to stay until that task is completed. But we love you, we love you in South Evanston, just like they love you in the Fifth Ward and the Second Ward. And I just can't remember ever one incident where you didn't come through and make whatever was wrong right. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And with that, that concludes my reports.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
No communications, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Special Order of Business.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At your last meeting, the council directed that Ordinance Number 770-10, amending various portions of the zoning ordinance relating to religious institutions in the business, commercial, and downtown zoning districts, be re-referred back to the Planning and Development Committee, as well as placed on this agenda as a Special Order of Business. The Planning and Development Committee did consider this item and voted to return it to the City Council. Staff's ready to answer any questions. The Chair of the Committee may have additional comments, but the staff is ready to answer any questions.
Alderman Wilson.
I do have some, I have some substantial reservations about the proposal. I understand all of the reasons why it's being suggested and it's being proposed, but to me, it seems that it's more directed at addressing the symptom instead of the specific underlying problem. In addition, with regard to the way this ordinance is drafted, in looking at the zoning, I think it leaves the city with, if my understanding is correct, two remaining districts where a church would be a permitted use, and that the vast majority of the city, a church would not be a permitted use. I think the only remaining areas would be the MU and the U3. I had difficulty locating any MU areas on the map at all, and of course, U3 is the campus lakefront, which I don't think is very realistic for an independent church to consider locating at. And I think that would render pretty much the entire city off-limits to a church as a permitted use. So those are my two primary reservations, and I guess with that, I'll just defer to other comments.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, our City Attorney Grant Farrar gave me substantial amendments to the ordinance, which really are the commentary from his previous memo indicating why this ordinance would not be in violation of any constitutional standard or otherwise. And furthermore, and I know this doesn't address the fact that these are not permitted uses, but we did receive religious institutions' special use permits. The request I made was for all of the religious institutions in districts that require a special use. Instead, what I received was a list of all the churches that are in special use zoning districts that receive a permit for additional work, and I want to just read them. Bethel AME Church, Christ Temple Missionary Baptist Church, Christian Science Churches and Reading Rooms, Evanston Bible Fellowship, Friendship Baptist Church, Kingdom Hall of Jehovah's Witness, Mount Zion Tabernacle Apostolic Church, New Hope CME Church, Second Baptist Church, Seventh Day Adventist Church, Jewish Reconstructionist JRC on Dodge, and what is missing from here, of course, is Vineyard Christian Fellowship, which is on Howard Street. So, pardon me?
The mosque.
And the mosque, that had a special use as well, on, is that Bridge or Simpson?
Simpson and Bridge.
Okay. So, one of the things that has come to pass is a realization by many of the facilities, especially those at Howard Street. So this does not prevent a church, of course, or a mosque, or a temple. All it does is place additional responsibility on those applicants, if they are in a special use district, to show that they are not going to be of any issues, such as we discussed tonight with the daycare center, restaurants. We have a variety, I mean, the list is as long as your arm, of things that are special use. And I have yet to had anybody argue to me that a church is any different. I mean, churches provide certain things, retail stores provide certain things, grocery stores provide certain things, restaurants, drive-ins, banks. Everybody does their thing, and I don't see that churches should be placed above the law in any case whatsoever. So I'm going to encourage us to move forward with this. Every church that is on Howard Street, or in any other district that would become a special use, can continue, and the proof is in the pudding here. These are churches already in a special use district that have had absolutely no problem with continuing and doing all sorts of interesting things. For example, JRC on Dodge tore down a building and built a new building. They were able to do that with a special use, and I was right here advocating for them. Second Baptist Church, expansion and a parking addition. I'm sure everybody supported that. I don't ever recall anybody objecting to that. So if you got a good use, you're going to get support. If you have a good argument, if you had a good application, you're going to be supported. There is nothing here that restricts or prevents a church, mosque, or synagogue, a religious institution of any kind, from existing in the City of Evanston after this ordinance is passed in a business district, in a commercial district, or downtown.
Alderman Shawn Baptiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I support the intent behind the proposal. I think that Alderman Rainey, your fight to make sure that Howard Street is a viable business district is a great thing. I do think that the ordinance is broad, and since your intent was to, in fact, really talk about that kind of restriction on Howard Street, the question is, why are we then all over the city? Why are we, why is the proposal covering so many other districts? And so, I would propose that we target the restriction to where you intended for the restriction to be. And I think that that particular district was a B3 district on Howard Street, and I know that there's some other concerns in some of the B1 districts where there's smaller business districts where there's an effort to try to encourage economic development. So on that basis, I would propose that Alderman Rainey, you consider accepting an amendment that restricts the special use to the B3 and B1 districts.
Are you responding?
Alderman Grover.
I acknowledge the issues that we have on Howard Street, which is vacant storefronts, and on Simpson Street, which is a huge influx of cars and parking shortages on Sundays. It's interesting that this ordinance is perceived as addressing those two very disparate kind of issues. And I'm glad to know the information about the special use permits that are issued already for religious institutions, mostly in our residential zones. So it shows me that religious institutions in Evanston are no strangers to special use permits. We must have amended the code some years ago to require special use permits in residential areas. I keep wondering, though, whether there is a less restrictive solution to addressing these problems on Simpson Street and on Howard Street. I think we've begun an interesting conversation with our faith community, engaging them in the larger discussions about economic development on Howard and a solution to some of the issues on Simpson Street. I don't know, Alderman Shawn Baptiste, if restricting the special use permit process to, was it B1 and B3?
Yeah.
Would accomplish the goal of finding a less restrictive means of accomplishing what we want on both Simpson and Howard. I'd welcome more suggestions.
Alderman Rainey.
I would like to disabuse all of you of the notion that the reason for this effort of mine is because there are vacant storefronts on Howard Street. There aren't vacant storefronts on Howard Street. There are exactly three storefronts on Howard Street that are available for rent, three of them. So I don't know where you get, you think they're vacant because they're shuttered and closed, and sometimes don't have adequate signage, but they're not vacant. They have churches in them, or synagogues in them. They don't, they're not vacant. So the problem is that they're not vacant, and the fact that they're not vacant won't allow for retail and commercial uses that will liven the street and create activity on the street. So I have heard over and over that, number one, there's too many vacant storefronts on Howard Street. Number two, if the churches weren't there, there would be vacant storefronts. And, you know, my point is, you can't come to Howard Street, you can't go in any district where there are all, where it's all occupied by churches. Now, one of the problems we have, of course, on Howard Street, and when I started out here, this was not all about Howard Street. I don't think, after reading, after reading the literature, that Evanston is very different than other communities. Other communities do restrict the permitted use of churches and mosques and other religious uses in business and commercial districts. When I first looked at the B1, the B districts and the C districts, I was shocked to see that most of the uses, really, are uses that are not-for-profit type uses, not necessarily tax-exempt uses. And when you're renting from an owner, which most of the churches are, the taxes are being paid. So taxes have never been the issue on Howard Street or in other areas. But we have to start thinking about economic development, and when you start thinking about that, you take a look at your community and you wonder, how can we develop if we don't have any available space? If there is an available space, why would you want to rent one of the three available spaces when there is no activity on Howard Street? Or any other street that is chock-a-block full with churches, mosques, or synagogues? I mean, it just can't happen. So it makes no sense. What makes sense to me, and which we heard Alderman Wilson comment on, is opening up the residential districts as permitted uses for churches. And the very first comment out of an Alderman's mouth was, oh, I don't think the residents would like that. Well, you know, we're either going to, we're either going to, you know, open up churches and religious institutions to the people that use them, or, you know, we're going to shut down commercial districts. Now, I can tell you, since we began talking about this a few weeks ago, that we've had several inquiries for more churches on Howard Street, and this is, this is just the facts. Somebody from Buffalo Grove wants to put a church there, and somebody from, I guess, DeKalb, because it's an 815 area code, wants to put a church on Howard. And then there's another one that we don't know who they are, because they didn't leave a name. But we've got to do something. And to get to this point tonight, and suggesting amendments to this ordinance without ever having any discussion about that is unfortunate. So I would really encourage the council to support this, and let's move on. It obviously has had absolutely no impact on any of these churches. I don't know of anybody who's had a problem with this. So, like I always say, if it's good enough for Second Baptist, it's good enough for the rest of the city.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two questions. Maybe staff can help me with this. One of the, one of the trends in churches, from what I understand, are these church cafes, which are a hybrid of church, religious institution, and a cafe. How would the proposed ordinance, the amendment, the text amendment, affect churches operating within a cafe? And my second question is that, help me understand how the special permitting process would work. As our code now stands, a religious institution can be required to provide parking, additional parking, if our zoning administrator decides that the church opening there would create an additional burden that would require an additional parking requirement. And under the proposed ordinance, it would go through a special use process, and there's an automatic parking requirement attached to that. But in both cases, with or without the ordinance, that parking requirement can be satisfied by available parking within 1,200 feet. So the church cafes and how the parking requirement works, please.
Yes, Alderman, if I could take the second question first, in terms of the parking requirements. As you state, the parking requirements for a religious institution can be fulfilled by essentially having an agreement with a lot within 1,200 feet of the church, provided that suitable written contract arrangement approved by the Corporation Council exists for the use of such lot for a period covering no less than five years. The religious institution parking requirement is one parking space for each 10 seats in the main auditorium, assembly hall, or sanctuary. For bench or pew seating, every 18 linear inches of seating shall constitute one seat for the purposes of calculating required parking. So that is basically the parking requirement for religious institutions. The proposed ordinance eliminates any exemption from off-street parking and loading requirements for churches, for religious institutions, I should say, in the business, commercial, or downtown districts, so that's the standard that would apply. The second, the first question, if I understand it correctly, was a cafe within a church or religious institution, or the other way around?
Other way around.
Other way around. Basically, restaurants are either type 1 or type 2 restaurants in Evanston. Generally, a cafe that includes takeout, those kinds of things would be a type 2 and will require a special use.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I think one of the things that's becoming apparent is that, notwithstanding the representations, this isn't a question of whether a use is a good use or not, or whether a church is a good use, generally speaking. And the inference that if you come with an application that's perhaps well-written, well-prepared, and indicating appropriate use within the city limits, inferring that it's going to be approved is not really fair. I think what's clear is that certain uses, particularly the churches, aren't wanted in specific areas. Now, this ordinance includes virtually the entire city of Evanston. There's almost no area, and there's certainly no reasonable area, except in the university areas, where a church would be a permitted use any longer. Suggesting that we put them into the residential areas, which isn't part of this ordinance, doesn't solve any of the problems either. There's a reason that churches are a special use in the residential areas as it is. Intuitively, I would think that if you're looking at a commercial area, you have businesses that are closed on Sunday mornings, parking isn't as much of a problem. If the churches were all to relocate into residential neighborhoods, that is going to be more of an issue. People don't necessarily want a lot of people parking in the neighborhoods. That's just an intuitive basis. But even setting that aside, there is no exception or no change to the residential areas, and this basically puts... And this basically puts this entire city off limits. And I think this is absolutely sending the wrong message when you're doing something like that. So I don't see how we can possibly even consider this ordinance as it's drafted.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
I think, Alderman Fisk, did you have your?
No. I missed you. You're next. If I got them in the wrong order, sorry.
That's fine. Thank you very much. The issue for me is not vacant storefront on Howard, and I've only heard one person mention that. And I don't think it's ever too late to try to offer amendments. That's what we do here. We've not deliberated over this. At our meeting, the city meeting with the religious leaders last week, I know that the city manager had talked about the B1 and B3 districts as a possible option. I don't know whether you want to elaborate on that a little more before I finalize my comment.
Only that I think it was the intent of the council for the meeting that we had last week, to look for some compromises. And that was put forward by myself with the pastors that were there, and they did not reject it out of hand. I think that there was an understanding that there were needs in certain areas of the city, and while there was not a, an agreement by any means, certainly it was talked about as a possible compromise.
Okay. I think that, you know, any process of trying to make law starts from, you know, the specific needs. And that's why I think your leadership was crucial, Alderman Rainey, to say, look, Howard Street has a problem. We need to find a way to allow for greater excitement, greater activity, greater foot traffic, greater commercial activities on Howard Street. And so I think that the majority of us agree with that. But the expansion of the restriction in terms of churches to C1 districts just throughout the city, I don't think was the, the initial point of departure. I don't think that was the, the argument that was put forth. And so as we try to organize our thoughts and come forth with a response that is restricted to what it is that was the intent, I think it's reasonable to say, since Howard Street, for the most part, is B3, we should accommodate that concern and try to see if we could find a way to increase the commercial activities in that particular district. And for other districts that tend to have a great need for economic activity at this particular point in time, as we do our planning, such as the B1, other B1 districts, let's look at those districts and try to see if we can implement this special use in that way. And so that is why I am suggesting that we not be so broad, but that we restrict the, this particular ordinance to the B1 and B3 districts. That's my position.
Alderman Fisk.
And so on that basis, then, I'm going to move that amendment. I need a second.
Second.
Alderman Fisk.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you just repeat the amendment? You're limiting it to...
I'm just moving that we restrict the application of this ordinance to the B1 and B3 districts of the city.
Point of information, Madam Mayor, can we, can we have some idea of where the B1 districts are?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Marino.
The B1 districts are in many different parts of the city, but to provide some examples, along Greenleaf, at Wesley, there's a B1 district, west of Ashland, along Greenleaf as well, Dempster and Darrow in the vicinity is a B1. Lake and Ashland, there are also B1s not too far from the CTA metro right-of-way. Simpson is also a B1 west of Ashland to Darrow on, on the west side. And, let's see, other B1s. There is a B1 west of the B2 on Main Street. That doesn't necessarily include all of them, but that's an example of how they're scattered about that part of the city.
No, I street. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I understand where Alderman Rainey's coming from, and I support where she's coming from. I think she understands really clearly that, that a storefront that is not lively, is not visible, is, has an opaque front on it, does not inspire new businesses to locate near them. And I think the primary goal of this council, of the 11 goals that I believe we adopted, the first one was economic development. It's part of, the reason that I took the position that I did on the adult daycare on Davis Street, and it's part of the reason that I support Alderman Rainey in, in this effort here. I think we need to do everything that we can to help encourage and help, to help encourage new, new businesses, especially those businesses that are going to be producing tax revenue for the city, to locate here. And I feel that it is, it is, I don't want to see anyone assume that this is anti-church or in any way sending a negative message to the congregations. In my ward, in our neighborhood, we have, I believe, four special uses that are in the university zone and in residential zones. And all those special uses have been approved, and all those special uses coexist with the neighbors, some better than others. And when they don't coexist, I hear about them and we work on that. But I don't see that there would be any problem for a congregation who wanted to start up of going through the process and having a receptive ear on the part of the city. So Alderman Rainey, I support you on this, and I think I understand the reasons for your doing it, and I encourage the council to think first of economic development.
Alderman Holmes.
I'm going to sit, Madam Mayor, because I need to look at the computer as I'm talking. But I was referring back to Alderman Wilson, when you said that there would be nothing left but the MU and the U3.
Right.
That's, if you look at the list that was given to us, the permitted uses, B1, B1A, B2, B3, C1, C1A, C2, D1, and D1. And M, well, MU and of course DU3, which I'd already said. So there are like eight areas.
That's how it is now.
Right.
Right. But if we change it with the ordinance, the only thing that, if I'm mistaken, Mr. Marino, please correct me, but the ordinance would change that, so the only two remaining are the MU and the U3. And the U3, of course, is a university lakefront property.
Right, okay, all right.
And MU, I can't even find on the map.
And then what Alderman Jean Baptiste is saying, they would remove only two, and that would leave eight of those districts left then, right?
That's what Alderman Jean Baptiste is suggesting.
All right, great. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page.
Right.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey.
So there's no more MU's left.
I don't have anything to say.
City manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The city attorney has prepared some revisions to the ordinance with some recitals. We would ask that the maker of the motion, Alderman Jean Baptiste, if he would allow the city attorney to distribute those recitals to the council, and if you would consider including them in the motion.
Alderman Wilson.
I appreciate your suggested changes, Alderman Jean Baptiste, but I don't think it would be appropriate to do this without reviewing the exact locations. We have a number of things on a map. I have some concerns about possible church locations in my ward that I can't find readily on the map as it is. And, you know, again, we're going to be making an impact on people who probably have no idea that we're going to be singling them out. And I don't think that, I don't think that that's right or appropriate. I think it would, it only makes sense if we are going to make that kind of change. And, and again, I don't think we should be doing this at all, but if we're going to be limiting any of those specific items, I think we need to look at exactly what's in those areas and, and take that under consideration, and we haven't done any of that whatsoever.
Mr. Farrar?
Oh. Alderman Rainey, I'm sorry. Could we have the city attorney?
I was just going to say that if Alderman Wilson has a problem with this, this is special order of business. It has to be voted up or down tonight, one way or another. So you should feel free to vote against it, but it can't be dragged out any longer.
I'm not suggesting that.
City attorney.
Madam Mayor, if the members of the council are so inclined, I can pass out the recitals that are, have been referenced by city manager Bob Quin.
Please do.
Do we strip further, we strip it to the third?
Do you have copies of the press?
On Howard Street, I don't think. Seeing no further lights, I think we're going to wait a while while everyone reads this or studies the map.
Madam Mayor, would you like the city attorney just to read the amendment?
Mr. Farrar, do you want to walk us through this?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, at the outset, the revisions that are on the yellow paper do not incorporate Alderman Jean Baptiste amendment. It is the all-city-wide approach. It's currently before us, prior to Alderman Jean Baptiste amendment. With respect to the, what's before you, everything that has been underlined, what I attempted to do is incorporate in the recital section provisions relative to the case law that speak to Ralupa and RFRA-related issues, the provisions related to the city's economic development efforts, language in the recitals there, recite the council's deliberations, the plan-commission deliberations. It sets forth in the record all of the meetings that have been had on this particular topic. It sets forth the citizen dialogue, the citizen comment, and the due process concerns that have been raised by members of the faith-based community that have been addressed by the council during its deliberations. So those particular recitals are found in the first four pages of the ordinance.
And Mr. Farrar, the ordinance, the remaining part of the ordinance is as was presented at the last council meeting.
Correct.
So if Alderman Jean Baptiste is in agreement, his motion could then be amended to include the B3, B1 only, and these recitals?
Correct.
Alderman Gro...
Are you going to read it into it? We've, 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 we can read it, otherwise it has been submitted to the council.
I can read all the recitals into the record, if that is the wish of the council and the mayor.
Not mine particularly. Alderman Grover.
Is there a logic of applying the proposed special use requirements just to B1 and B3? Is there something about B1, B3 that makes them distinct or different from all the other different zoning districts that the ordinance would otherwise apply to?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Grover, we can certainly speak to what characterizes those districts from other business districts. Mr. Marino could, could speak to that if you'd like. Mr. Marino, briefly?
The B districts have many similarities. Probably the most distinctive B district is the B3 district, which permits the greatest height and density of all the B districts. But there are many similarities in terms of permitted uses in each of the districts. There is also the B1A district in the Central Street corridor. There are, I think, three, four iterations of that within that corridor that were created through the Central Street master planning process. But I think the most distinctive B district is the B3 district among that group. But again, there are a great deal of similarities in terms of core business and retail service groups.
Mr. Marino, what distinguishes the B1 district from other B districts?
The B1 district is intended to promote and preserve small-scale, limited shopping and business uses that service the neighborhoods in which the business uses are located. Uses with, in this district share common characteristics, such as relatively small storefronts built to the front lot line, and provide limited services. No individual use of this district should exceed 7,500 square feet in size. The B2 district is designed to promote and preserve the older neighborhood and pedestrian-oriented shopping areas, found primarily at arterial roadway intersections and adjacent to mass transit facilities. This also, this district, B2, also includes professional office and financial service facilities. B3, by comparison, is intended to provide for higher-density business development at compact locations adjacent to mass transit facilities that can support intense business uses and accommodate greater building heights than B1 or B2 business districts. The B1A district is designed to accommodate continued use of neighborhood-oriented business districts and pedestrian-oriented shopping areas found primarily on arterial roadways and often adjacent to single-family residential areas. This district can also accommodate specialty retail, professional office, and financial service facilities that attract a larger market area. No individual use in this district should exceed 20,000 square feet in size. So that's the comparison in a nutshell of the four B districts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance has given me great thought and much nervousness from the start. I, I think that, it seems to me, while I understand probably that Alderman Baptiste, Jean Baptiste, proposed amendment would, or not so proposed, but stated amendment, proposed amendment, would, would target the areas we are probably more focused upon, it, it does seem like we are targeting then those areas that are specifically heavy with religious institutions. I don't know that I could vote for it even in that way, but, and I'll know, it makes me very uncomfortable. I realize in the, in my, in my district, it's B1A. This would not even affect the sixth ward. But I just feel uncomfortable overall legislating in this way, and that I think there's got to be a better way to do this with regard to density or something else that could be applied more universally.
Alderman, Alderman Rainey.
Alderman Jean Baptiste, I'm going to suggest an amendment to your, to your motion. And that would be that we amend Section 6 of the ordinance, which removes as a permitted use religious institutions from B3. And amend this ordinance so that it only affects B3 districts, and there's only one in the entire city of Evanston, and that's on Howard Street, to amend the B3 zoning district as not permitting as a special or permitted use religious institutions. Would only affect this district. This is a very distinct district in that it does allow for extraordinary height, it does allow for extreme traffic, et cetera, et cetera. And I am, I'm going to make that suggestion. It will not affect any other district. We all know exactly where the district is. It's east of Ridge Avenue to the CTA tracks. We know what's there now. I don't think anybody's confused about where this district is. It doesn't, it doesn't bend and twist into any other neighborhood. It's a very simple, specific area. And therefore, I would ask you to accept that as a substitute amendment.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
The reason I'm suggesting this is everybody is so certain that they know exactly how I feel and why I'm doing what I'm doing. And so I want to really zero in on what I'm doing. And I'm laying it out there, and if you truly believe that my leadership is, is something worth addressing or accepting on this matter, this is, this is truly what I wish you would accept.
Alderman Rainey, and of course...
Alderman Rainey, and of course, for purpose of clarification for everybody who's here and who's listening, the existing churches would not be impacted.
They would not be impacted.
Right? And so on that basis, I will accept your amendment. Your substitute motion.
But I need a second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson?
Could we just get in, some guidance from our legal counsel on whether we can preclude the use, you know, in any fashion, understand this as, as a special use or otherwise?
Just so I under, Madam Mayor and members of the council, just so I understand Alderman Rainey's proposed amendment, it would, it would totally prohibit any future religious use institutions in this B3 district from locating there and being either a permitted or a special use, correct?
Correct.
My on-the-fly consideration of that proposed amendment, I would express some concerns from an RU, LU, IPA, Ralupa standpoint. I believe that would possibly subject the city, the city to an equal protection challenge due to the fact that it would be possibly considered by a court to not be a narrowly-tailored restriction furthering a compelling governmental interest that would also be a zoning regulation applied in a general manner. I, I think a court could possibly render an interpretation that that would be excessively restrictive and violative of Ralupa.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey.
Are there any other districts in the city of Evanston that, where churches are not either a special or permitted use?
In the industrial districts, that is, that is correct. However, an industrial district, an industrial district is different from the, the commercial district that is being proposed by your amendment.
Madam Mayor, would you accept an amendment from me?
Yes, I would.
All right. That churches or houses of worship in a B3 district be allowed as long as they exceed 4,000 square feet?
Is there a second?
Second.
City Attorney, does that resolve your problem?
If I can just have a minute to, to consider that. Okay, my concern with that proposed amendment is that as the zoning code is currently written, religious institution does not make any difference with respect to square footage. So if we're talking about a religious institution as the zoning code is currently drafted, that definition is not broken up by square footage. So my concern would be the consistency with that definition. My other concern would also be discriminating amongst different religious institutions based upon square footage. That, to my mind, raises a possible uniformity challenge.
I give up. I give up.
I can only, I can only, I can only, Madam Mayor and members of the committee, I can only speak to the possible legal ramifications, and I'm trying to do my best to, to apprise everybody of my concerns as the debate evolves.
I withdraw that.
Thank you, Alderman.
We're back to Alderman John Baptiste.
All right. We are back to Alderman John Baptiste. Do you want to restate your motion?
I think Alderman Win has a substitute motion.
Listening to counsel, I think that our wisest choice here would be to limit the religious institutions to special uses in B3. We've shown that special uses can be granted for churches for religious institutions. They can be weighed against appropriately, just like any other special use. One of the issues in a special use, one of the standards for special use is that it, whatever number it is, help me out, it's, that, that there are, there, thank you, member, former member, that there are not, that it's not a proliferation of the same use repeatedly, cumulative effect, thank you. So all of those standards are there in a special use to provide what we want, which is to provide, to, to provide a platform for economic development. So I think, Alderman Rainey, I understand the concerns that you have. I support your issues, but I, after listening to the council, I don't think that completely permitting, prohibiting churches in B3 is an appropriate approach to take. I believe the original approach to, of making it a special use in a B3 district is the appropriate way to go, and I can support that. I would move to. Move as a substitute motion that we make churches, religious institutions in B3 to be a special use.
Second.
Alderman Rainey?
I, I'm, I have two comments.
You have no comment on that? City Manager?
And Alderman Win, would that also include the city attorney's recitals included?
Yes, I, I have finished reading those. Yes, that would also include those.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Wait, I think that actually they have to be altered somewhat.
Yeah, they have to be altered.
Just, just as a point of clarification, Alderman Win, yes. The recitals as currently on the floor contemplate a larger approach, but tracking the amendment, what I can do is appropriately amend the recitals to conform to B3 in form and substance and obviously make sure consistency is achieved in terms of grammar and that if the ordinance is so approved in the amended form, those recitals will thereby track.
Alderman Holmes?
I just want, I'm wondering what happens then to the other smaller business districts? And I have to come back to Simpson, to B1, or to Church and Dodge in the future. You know, I, I just don't understand why we're so opposed to a special use. We've seen, we've demonstrated that they can be granted, and it gives the people in the area an opportunity to have input. And I would love to see the B1 and B3 included in the same motion. If Alderman Win would accept that, I just.
I, I would accept that.
Is there a second for that? All right, it's been moved and seconded to restrict religious institutions to being special uses in B1 and B3. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just need to clarify about what this ordinance would then look like. It would include all of Mr. Farrar's new recitals. And looking at page four and the rest of it, it would simply include Sections 2, 3, 6, and 7, which are the only sections that apply to B1 and B3 districts. And every other section would be deleted as not being included in the amended ordinance.
Is that correct, Mr. Farrar?
I don't think he was listening. Were you, okay. He was talking too. All right. Thank you, City Attorney.
I don't think he was listening. Were you listening? You were?
It's correct.
He said it's correct and he's got it. All right. All right, seeing no further lights, are we ready to vote on this? Are we ready? All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll? Ordinance 77010. This is B1 and B3.
Alderman Rainey?
City Clerk, is this, are we voting on the, the most recent amendment?
B1 and B3, yes.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Win?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
No.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Seven to two, the motion passes. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
We have to vote on the ordinance now?
Oh, we'll vote on the, sorry about that. I'm a little eager to get through this. City Clerk, could we vote on the ordinance?
As amended.
As amended.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Win?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
No.
Alderman Grover?
Aye, thank you.
Seven to two?
Seven to two, the ordinance passes. All right, next we have, not on this agenda, Citizen Comment, and one citizen has already left who has signed up, and John Line Weber is there behind the post. You're welcome. That concludes Citizen Comment. And next, Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the special council meeting November 6, special meeting of November 15, special city council meeting of the 17th, and a regular meeting on November 22.
Alderman Rainey?
I beg your pardon.
Excuse me. Staff would like to pull the meeting of the 22nd minutes for further discussion?
Really?
If that's all right.
Okay, to take it off the consent agenda?
For discussion, yes, we have a correction we'd like to make.
Disregard November 22.
Thank you.
Under Administration and Public Works, City of Evanston payroll through November The City of Evanston payroll through December 5 in the amount of $2,152,471.53. The City of Evanston bills through December 14, whoa, $16,183,537.21. The City of Evanston credit card bills through October 31, the amount is $74,844.44. A3 is approval of the Utility Commission 2010 annual report. This is under amendments. Next, approval of a contract award to Hill Corporation for collection of outstanding debt through several city departments. The funding is based on a commission basis with an amount collected to be deposited in the appropriate revenue accounts. Next, Administration and Public Works requests your approval of a contract award to Bowler Construction Company for the Evanston 311 Call Center project. This is for reconstruction of a certain area of the police department, the amount of $61,100. Next is approval of a purchase of a dehumidification system for the West Filter Gallery at the Evanston Water Treatment Plant. This is Munter's dehumidification system, and the award goes to GV Zintel Associates in the amount of $36,000. Next is approval of a contract award for testing, repair, and certification of vehicle-mounted aerial devices. This goes to Duco Incorporated in the amount of $21,268 and is for an annual period of December 15 to 10 through December 14 of 2011. Next is approval of vehicle replacement purchases. This is removed from the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. One of the vehicles is going to be removed. Next is approval of the purchase of additional city works licenses and implementation services for streets and sanitation in the amount of $74,329. This is for administration and management of work assignments in the Streets and Sanitation Department. Approval of a contract, change order number one for David Arm Streetlight Fixer Replacement Project. The original contract will be increased by $79,464 to $189,436.50. This is for the addition of 112 light fixtures on Dodge from Howard to Simpson Street. And funding for this is from the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant in the revised total of $189,436.50. Next, we have a series of tax abatements, and I will read the resolution number and the series of bonds that it abates. Resolution 68R10 abates bond series 2000, 69R10 abates bond series 2002AB, 70R10 abates bond series 2002C, 71R10 abates for bond series 2004, 72R10 abates for bond series 2005, 73R10 abates for bond series 2006, 74R10 abates for bond series 2007, 75R10 abates for bond series 2008B, 76R10 abates for bond series 2008C, 77R10 abates for bond series 2008D, 78R10 abates for bond series 2010B. Next, we have ordinance 75010, which is for introduction and amends various sections of Title IX General Offenses, Chapter Eight Weapons, and has to do with bringing our local ordinance in line with the U.S. Supreme Court decisions. Ordinance 92010 regarding the sale of sewer services to 2010 is for introduction and sells the sewer under McCormick Boulevard and 2010 Hawthorne Lane to the abutting property owner Marvin Cantor. For action tonight is ordinance 88010, which amends City Code subsection 4126S to remove time restrictions on political or campaign signs on public, on private property and brings our city code into compliance with the new state statute. Ordinance 94010, the 2010 City of Evanston tax levy is for action tonight, and the amount, excluding general obligation debt, is $30,452,000, let's see, is that right? $30,452,000, hmm, I don't have the rest of the number, I'm sorry. But it's $30,452,282, I believe, is the amount. Ordinance 932010 is a special service area for tax levy in the amount of $395,918. The next item is the Evanston Township Tax Levy, which is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, under Planning and Development, is ordinance 96010. I'm going to move introduction, but I believe it, requests will be made to vote on this tonight. Ordinance 96010, consideration of a special use permit for a micro distillery at 918 Chicago Avenue in the C1 Commercial Zoning District for introduction. Ordinance 90010 is for action and grants a special use for an adult daycare center. This is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, major variance request for an open front yard parking space at 1408 Dempster. This is for action, and the recommendation is to deny the application. Ordinance 77010 amends various portions of the zoning ordinance having to do with religious institutions, is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next is ordinance 91010, which is for action and grants a special use, approval for a special use of a type-two restaurant at 1307.5 Chicago Avenue in the B1 Business Zoning District. Under Human Services, approval of the Township of Evanston November monthly bills in the amount of $101,180.21. Next is approval of the Township of Evanston. Next is approval of the Township of Evanston annual audit for the fiscal year ending March 31, 2010. Under Other Committees, approval of the financial, this is from Economic Development. The Economic Development Committee recommends your approval of financial assistance for facade improvement project for Few Spirits at 918 Chicago Avenue. Next is approval of financial assistance for facade improvement project for Ocean Eak Restaurant at 505 Main Street. It's a 50/50 cost sharing, up to $10,000. Ordinance 47010 is from the Rules Committee, I believe, yes, and amend Section 251 of the City Code regarding the duties of the Human Relations Commission. That's for introduction. And ordinance 89010 is also for introduction and it has to do with changing the City Code to make the Energy Commission the Utilities Commission and include the water utility, et cetera, under its jurisdiction. Under Appointments, we have appointments to the Sign Review and Appeals Board, the following: Mary Ann Costanzo, Donald Jackson, and Thomas Keith. To the Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness, we have Joyce Bart, Sue Calder, Sidney Castleberry, Walter Cody, Cav Hogue, Paul Hammond, Oscar Hawthorne, Karen Hunn, Rabbi Peter Noble, Dan Lewis, Kate Mahoney, Kevin Mott, Sue Murphy, Paul Selden, Karen Singer, and Dorothy Williams. With that, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Jean-Petis, Administration Public Works?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Call Council's attention to item 8.35. This is a request that we approve the purchase of replacement vehicles. This matter has been amended at committee level to reduce the number of vehicles to 10 because one of the vehicles we considered to purchase is a hybrid vehicle for the police department. And upon further review of the capacity of this vehicle, we discovered that it would not be able to fulfill the functions intended. So therefore, we have taken this off of the total. So I am going to move that council approve the purchase of 10 vehicles in the amount
Second. Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Could you clarify, Alderman Jean-Petis, which vehicle from our list?
You know what, it's for the fire department, it's for the police department. But I have the Assistant City Manager here to talk further about the particulars of this particular vehicle.
The vehicle that we're referring to is, was originally specified as a Ford Explorer and we did go to look at alternative vehicles for both that, as well as the Evidence Tech Nation vehicle. The hybrid for the replacement was a Ford Escape, but we literally cannot put the three radios and the mobile data terminal in the vehicle and have a front passenger. So it just will not fit. The other reason that, and in this case, there was about a $4,000 to $6,000 difference in the pricing, so not too much difference in the pricing, that we would have looked at it. But the other vehicles to replace the Yukon or the Expedition, the pricing was nearly double, so we were going from $28,000 to over $52,000 on those vehicles. As noted in committee by Public Works Director Robinson, we are coming back to the council with grant request for green vehicles that would be looking at green vehicles with respect to trucks. And we would also then bring this vehicle analysis back as well, as quickly as possible.
I appreciate everything staff is doing to get us greener in our fleet and would ask that not only do we consider, please, the alternative fuels, but also alternative sizes to the vehicles and try to scale down as often as we can. And instead of buying the Expeditions and the Tahos, if we can buy smaller vehicles for those purposes when we can, that would be good.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Alderman Nguyen just brought to my attention the item M1, the minutes of November 22nd. What are we doing with that?
We're holding it.
We holding it? We're not?
We just need to make a correction, Alderman Jean-Petis, if that's correct. All right with you.
So you're not amending right now, you're just going to bring it back on the next agenda?
No, no, we just need to, some numbers were transposed, we just like to read the correct numbers into the record and be done.
Tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll be doing that sometime soon?
Right now.
You want to do that? Go ahead.
On page 28 of the packet, the reference is made to the police and fire pension tax levies and they are transposed, so the fire pension tax levy should read $6,188,885 and the police pension levy should read $7,588,132. They're just transposed.
Okay, move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ahs have it.
Okay, then we now at item?
821.
Move approval of the tax levy ordinance 95-0-10, which levies the annual property tax for the Evanston Township. This ordinance was induced at November 22nd, 2010 city council meeting. We got a second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Six to three, the motion passes. Alderman Jean-Petis, does that conclude your report?
concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, Planning and Development, Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to yield the floor to Alderman Nguyen for an item in her ward. Madam Mayor, with respect to item P1, ordinance 96010, consideration of a special use permit for a micro distillery at 918 Chicago Avenue in the C1 Commercial Zoning District, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the rules are suspended.
I move approval. Madam Mayor?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance. City Clerk?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Distillery can start at once.
I think you might have one or two more stills.
What about P2?
Yes.
Here I am.
There you are.
Madam Mayor, for action is ordinance 90010, which grants a special use for adult daycare center at 524-526 Davis Street in the D4 Downtown Transitional Zoning District.
Second.
Madam Mayor, the reason why this is off the consent agenda is because of several amendments made to it by Alderman Wilson. Were you the final person who made, or Alderman?
Tan of for by Jean-Petis.
One of the, I'm only feeling comfortable that I really have a grasp on the one amendment which would require a condition that people be free to come and go during the day from this facility, from the program, into the community, into the shops, et cetera. And could you remind?
The second one is that Evanston residents be given preference.
Oh, I'm so sorry. And the second one is that Evanston residents be given preference for entrance into the program. So I think those are the two we settled on.
All right.
So those are the two amendments. Could I have a second for those?
Second.
Okay. Therefore, I move approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Council, for your work on this. One of the things that I have been concerned about and mentioned when we were talking about Howard Street is the removal of ground floor retail space from the commercial area and turned over to not-for-profit. I would very much like to see there be a sunset provision on this special use so that if this particular tenant decides to move, that the special use expire at that time.
I really apologize, that was the third thing that I forgot, that the committee agreed that this special use is attached to the applicant and not to the property.
Thank you, so that's a part of your motion.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
All right, so that's a part, we're incorporating that into the motion. All right, it's been moved and seconded to grant the special use with the following requirements, that people be free to come and go, that Evanston residents be given preference, and what was your last one?
And that?
That the special use is attached to the applicant.
Okay, ends with this applicant. City Clerk, do you have all that written down? He's still writing. Alderman Grover?
I have a question as to one of the amendments that is regarding the freedom of participants to come and go. Does that mean in and out the door, in and out of the program, in and out of Evanston? Is it?
Door.
Not in and out of Evanston, they've got to stay.
Kind of specific to me as to how, is that how the language of the ordinance will read, that the participants will be free to come and go?
Could I, could I explain that? I'm sorry.
I'm just looking for more precise language.
Right, I can, I can understand that.
Go ahead, Alderman.
The committee discussed this forever. The concern was the, the, the name of the program is an adult daycare and that implies to many that people require constant attention and care and are not free to come and go to shop, to go to dinner, to go to lunch, to spend money in Evanston. And we were assured by the operator of Omega that that was not the case, that people were free to come and go, they could go shopping during the day, they could go to lunch during the day, they could come and go as they please, some people even will drive their cars to and from the program. So that is what was meant. In other words, that people can leave the facility unassisted or assisted during the program day. How's that? Okay.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman Grover, that really does provide the economic benefit. At an earlier meeting with the, with the daycare provider, he stated that the attendees would not be able to leave the building unless they were accompanied by staff. And there's just two or three staff that are going to be there and all of those have, you know, have assignments to the rest of the 18 to 20 people who are going to be there. So the likelihood was that no one was going to be able to leave the facility in, in order to either go out to lunch or to patronize the surrounding businesses. So this grew out of that concern.
Alderman Grover?
Oh, I understand the intent of the amendment, I think I was just looking for more precise language than come and go. Are we looking to, for there to be no restriction on participants' movements while they're part of the program, or whatever Alderman Rainey's formulation was, which I've forgotten already?
Let me repeat this.
All right, City Clerk, you've been writing away, do you want to repeat the motion?
Okay, the motion was moved and approved to grant with the amendments the permission for the adult daycare to be functional with the attachment to the owner if he decides to, can't read that last word, if he, if he?
If he leaves.
If he leaves and the participants are free to come and go as they please with no restrictions. Does that get it? Okay.
Is that all right? All right. And Evanston residents?
And the Evanston residents are preferred before anyone else. Okay.
Alderman Wilson?
Just for, I guess, slightly further clarification, I'm assuming that our council will perhaps more eloquently translate those sentences into like?
Eloquent than Rodney and I did?
Not that it was inelegant, perhaps, let me withdraw that. Rather than say eloquently, in more legalese, less eloquently, more legally.
And maybe less eloquent, too.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Would you please call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Door.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Yes.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes. Does that conclude your report? You got another one? Yes, you do.
Did we, we did not leave on the consent agenda the religious uses?
No.
Yeah, you took P2.
You took it off.
Yeah, P4.
P2 and P4.
Pardon me?
We just did P2.
Oh, we did, too.
We're at P4.
All right, Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 77010, which amends various portions of the zoning ordinance relating to religious institutions.
That was done, that's done already.
But we didn't vote on it.
Did we completely do that?
Is that?
We voted on it.
We did that as a special order. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
You pulled it off here, but I thought that was, because we'd done it. All right, Alderman Grover, Human Services, no report. Other committees, done? All right, call of the wards. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are you finding anything we're missing, Alderman Nguyen? Okay. Sorry.
I had to do that all over again.
Once was enough, Alderman Rainey.
Once was enough. Well, I appreciate those of you who have the sensitivity to understand some of the issues in this community regarding shuttered storefronts and lack of economic development, so I really appreciate it. And for those of you who don't quite get it, I'd love to have an opportunity to meet with you and to share with you some of my concerns and those concerns of the business district, especially on Howard Street, which I'm most familiar with. We had a Christmas party this few weeks ago where over 20 merchants came and the main topic of conversation was there's no traffic on the street, there's absolutely no traffic on the street. So looking forward to having a chance to talk with you. It isn't all, you know, all the business districts in this town are not like Central Street, they're not like Dempster, they're not like Main Street. So for those of you who understand that, I really do appreciate it. And I want to welcome all of our new staff members, this is really pretty exciting. And hopefully that they'll all find some time to, to meet with all of us and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Just wanted to announce that the Piccolo Theater
I just wanted to announce that the Piccolo Theater, which is on the edge of the Ninth Ward, but actually, I think, in the Fourth Ward, has one more weekend of their holiday panto, Robin Hood, so please go support them, they are located at the Metro Train Station, it's pretty neat, and happy holidays, be safe.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the addition of our new staff members is like filling our vacant storefronts in City Hall. Welcome to all of you, and we look not as contented, absolutely not. Filming for contagion went on last Thursday, was it, Friday? Thank you to Doug Gaynor, who stood there for hours and made everything go really smoothly. It was really interesting to see, the neighbors were thrilled, and with a few little hitches, I think we managed to bring that off well, and yes, Matt Damon was there, and a little bitty speck in the middle of the field, but he definitely was there. This Thursday is the next meeting of the NU City Committee here in the Aldermanic Library, and I invite all First Ward residents who are interested in that committee to come along and hear what's going on. Finally, I want to wish you all happy holidays and happy new year, and we'll see you all soon.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the clergy for coming forth and engaging in the process of, you know, the city trying to make laws. It is, you know, sometimes, all that we want is not what we get, but the process itself, you know, yield results where we find some kind of way to coexist. And I know that Alderman Holmes and I had talked about the greater involvement of the clergy in the day-to-day activities in the city, particularly in regard to some of the youth who have lost their ways, and the need to try to find a way to try to redirect them. I know there were some initial meetings that were held at Mount Zion, and we wanted to also begin to hold some meetings in some secular places, bookews and other places, so we could talk about the need for mutual respect and trying to live a productive life. To that end, let me also announce to everyone that what we were trying to announce earlier, and that is that the Kwanzaa celebration that we do every year in the city of Evanston is unique, we not only light the Christmas tree, we light the menorah, but we also light the kanara, which is, it holds the seven candles that signifies the seven principles of Kwanzaa, and begins on the 26th of December, and that first day is Umoja, which means unity, so we want everybody to come out on the 26th at 3:00 PM at, I see here, it says Jordaine is the initial ceremony, but on the 27th, at 3:00 PM, we are lighting the candles at Fountain Square, so please come out at 3:00 PM, dress very warmly, because last year we were just snowed under, you know, really, you know. So, I wanted to just let the members of the council know that we did meet with Optimum Views residents and that whole business district across from the theater with representatives from the various businesses, and that was one of the first meetings outside of the building that Steve Griffin went to, and he thought it was pretty robust and tense, because people had issues and we were there to respond, so that worked well. I want to also welcome you and all others, and I think that, you know, we are at a point where there's a real qualitative fight to try to make sure that there is equitable economic development going on throughout the city. Downtown needs to be sustained, but at the same time, those of us who are, you know, represent outlying areas, we want to see success in those areas as well, so thank you for being here and welcome to the challenge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I want to welcome Steve, Nancy, and Catherine, yes, and welcome aboard, and I know, I've talked with all of them, and they're eager and already hard at work, so I'm looking forward to having lengthier conversations with all of you. I also wanted to thank the members of the council for the strong and sustained support for the micro-distillery on Chicago Avenue, and also Paul Letko for his patience and willingness to learn with us in this entire process, and will, I look forward to having all of us there at some point, soon, soon, I think there are one or two more small hurdles for him to jump over, involving the state, not us. So with that, I want to wish all of you Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and I know Alderman Jean Baptiste is really eager to get going on these, and Happy and Safe and Healthy New Year, I look forward to 2011, working with all of us, together, again, for another productive year.
I want to thank everyone for their patience as we've adjusted to our new Streets and Sanitation implementation, and if there's anyone out there in, specifically in my ward who still has an outstanding issue that needs to be resolved, make sure you let me know that, I know that the staff's been working hard to get these things taken care of, there still are a number of questions floating around, so be sure you let me know that, and I want to wish everyone else a healthy and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste, I forgot one thing in my mayor's report this morning, I think you'd be happy to know, I toured an alternative school in Skokie on McCormick, Oliver Ruff is the interim principal, and a young woman from Evanston High, for whatever reason, had been transferred to that public school, things had not gone well for her at the high school, and they had a contest, nationwide contest, all public schools, not just alternative schools, entered to pick stocks and see who came out ahead, and this young woman picked Nikes and Uggs, she did the right thing, she picked something she knew something about, and she and the gentleman who was her partner came in second in the nation. So some of our students who have gotten in trouble have tons of potential and are doing very well, I'm looking to hire her immediately. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to add my welcome to all the new staff members, and I'm looking forward, I'm taking Mr. Griffin on a tour, the West Side, on Thursday, so we're looking forward to that. I want to congratulate again my problem solver officer, Officer Noble, and Foot Patrol Officer Rust Ann Jones, and I hope you all enjoyed the SNAP presentation, but the program has worked wonderfully, and we are just anxious to get it into other neighborhoods, and I'm sure that those of you who need it will also benefit from it. We would want to say to the clergy that I have a, I think we have a good track record already of special or permitted, special use in the Fifth Ward, we've had three in the last five years, and I think that if there is one that comes before us, we will work real hard to get it and get the neighbors involved in it, and that, for me, is the most important part, is that the people who live in that area will have a chance to have input into it. DC Cook, I just want to say to you all that he was, he's just been really special, he's been in my life since 1984, when I was director at Family Focus, and I followed his whole career, and we want to say a special goodbye to him on Wednesday, so if you're free from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock at Family Focus, please stop by, and we just want to say thank you from his Evanston connection, so if you want to come by, you're welcome. And then our regular ward meeting will be on Thursday at 7:00 PM, it's our annual potluck, so bring a dish to serve, six to eight people, and come and join us, it'll be fun. Thank you, and have happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to also say welcome to the new members of our staff, and also to the new pointees that the mayor announced tonight and that we confirmed, with regard to the mayor's task force on homelessness, a great group of people are beginning to form, and I think that should have great outcome. The other is something I know a little more about, sign review and appeals board, since I was on the committee before I joined this one. You know, congratulations to them, when they call an out for qualified designers, architects, people who really knew about the subject, the response was great, and the mayor was very gratified in getting those qualified people to keep our city less cluttered, more street-friendly, street advertising-friendly, sign-friendly. But I'd also like to thank the two men that I served on the sign review, sign review and appeals board with, Jack Weiss and John Maxey, their years of service to this community have been tremendous, and a lot of, the reason this community has a fresh and contemporary look is because they were very consistent in their use of signage and architectural detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
I got nothing, no report, no good wishes, no congratulations, I'm kidding, I'll do best to all of you, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I think, I think we can't leave here tonight without mentioning Dempster Dodge Shopping Center and the closing, the soon-to-be closing of AJ Wright, and I would like this city to take it upon itself to conduct a massive campaign to get TJ Maxx, the parent corporation, to rebrand that store as either Home Goods, TJ Maxx, or something, God knows. That, that shopping center has been plagued, it had, for those of you who haven't been here forever, we had a wonderful farm war there, it, and, you know, somebody embezzled and, you know, it went out of business nationwide, we had Toys R Us there, that disappeared on us, we had Frank's, that went out, we got a Renaissance we thought was Stephen Berry's, that never showed up because it went bankrupt, and now AJ Wright, we cannot allow that store to go dark, we can't allow it, I don't care whose ward it's in, we all have to join forces, and everybody in this city has to start emailing and calling and doing whatever they can to, you know, the TJ Maxx Corporation, because this is a disaster.
Maybe the press could leave the word plagued out of reports of that, so that lobbying would be more productive. Thank you, Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate litigation amendments, these agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C5, C6, C11, and C21.
Second.
Second.
Could we have a roll call votes?
Alderman Rainey? Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.